Next item on our agenda is the face-to-face art project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At last week's COW meeting, Artist JR was introduced as background to the proposed face-to-face art project. At that time, we believe that there may have been some misunderstanding on the specifics of the proposed project in Southfield. Thus, we requested an opportunity tonight to present the details of this project to the City Council for further consideration. A little bit of background, TED is an acronym for Technology Entertainment and Design Conference, is held annually and brings thousands of people together from these three interests to have a dialogue on science, business, art, and global issues facing the world. The TED Prize is designed to leverage the TED community exceptional array of talent and resources. It is awarded annually to an exceptional individual who receives approximately $100,000 and, much more important, one wish to change the world. The TED Prize 2011 winner is Artist JR and his global art exhibit titled Insight Out. We saw a little introduction on the artist last week. Now JR's wish is to challenge communities to change the world through art. He is sharing a portion of his prize with the city of Southfield to support an outdoor exhibit. The outdoor exhibit in Southfield will transform student photos of personal identity into pieces of community artwork. Specifically, Southfield's face-to-face art project is black-and-white photographic portraits of Southfield students, which will be enlarged to 53 inches tall by 35 inches wide on paper posters. These posters will be mounted like wallpaper on marine-grade plywood and installed approximately every 35 feet, hopefully along the front lawn of City Hall, from Civic Center Drive to the library entrance and various other locations throughout the community. I'd like to share some examples of the scale of these proposed posters and then I'll continue with my presentation. The photographic portraits will be temporarily displayed as outdoor gallery, starting on Saturday, June 4th, and will be removed at the end of the month. Now, one of the concerns that I heard from council is that this not be just a public school project. And we have reached out to Yeshiva Beth Yehuda and Akiva Hebrew Day School. Both have responded today positively. They want to partner and they would like to offer some of the photos of their children from their schools to be part of this display. What we are proposing on behalf of the city center and requesting that the City Council's support is the following: Permission to install approximately 20 to 30 of these art pieces on the front lawn for approximately four weeks; minimal support by Parks and Recreation and Streets and Highway for the installation of the frames and supervision of the event; and public relations support for promoting the project. We believe that this unique project will generate a positive dialogue in the community, attract visitors, and give us a platform to celebrate our future, the future of our children, the future of the city with the media. I took this photo with the scale, images of the children, out in the front lawn so you get an idea of the scale and proposed placement of these photographs. And we're proposing to locate them 10 feet off the sidewalk, in between the row of trees, approximately 30 or 35 feet apart. And on Civic Center Drive to approximately where the library entrance is to the north, we could accommodate between 20 and 25 of these posters. Now, the remaining images would be located at school sites and other businesses that want to participate throughout the community. So tonight, what we're asking the council to consider, one, is to give us permission to participate as a community in this joint project; two, provide some technical support by Parks and Rec and the Highway Department for the installation of the frames; and three, to work closely with the schoolteachers to promote this in a positive way for the city of Southfield. And I have some handouts for the council for further consideration. Two, our teachers are here. If you have any specific questions, then I'd be happy to fill any questions that council may have at this time.
Do you have any questions? Ms. Garrison?
Could you repeat again where this time you're planning on, would you like to put them down? Because last time we were here, you said up and down Civic Center, up and down Evergreen. And that was one of our concerns, so we thought it needed, or used to mine, that it was down, that it needs to be done on a smaller scale. So...
Comparing your concerns and just knowing logistically that to try to create 100 frames in a short time period, it would be very difficult. We wanted to participate. The City Center Advisory Board and the businesses were very excited about participating. So what, we scaled this project back to have 20 to 30 of these located on the front lawn of State Hall, from Civic Center Drive to the entrance of the library. And that would be the city's contribution to this project. Other posters might be displayed on private property, at other school sites, and other community venues throughout the community. But in order to have, I believe, an impact, we need a synergy of these located in a small area and accommodating traffic safety and other concerns that the council raised.
Okay, I just have three questions. My first question. Second question. Have you guys talked to the police department about the distraction of looking, drivers looking up at this type of displaying along a route such as Evergreen, which is heavily traveled at different times? And there are children and people crossing the street, going back and forth from the Civic Center to the restaurant, looking up and being distracted? Who have you talked to regarding the public safety?
Through the chair. The planning department has an internal review process that includes community policing, fire, engineering, planning, landscape, parks. And we vet all of these projects. If we have the blessing of the council, we certainly will vet this through those departments starting tomorrow. But we thought that there was an incomplete presentation last week. There was some misunderstanding, and we wanted to have the opportunity to come back here and show you the real scale, the location, and logistically what we were talking about. And if we can move forward, we would vet out those questions, concerns. We have to contact Mistake. There's a series of procedures that we would have to go through.
So let me ask this question again. Because this looking up and glancing, it only takes, we talked about this with signs, it only takes this long when you're distracted. You know, we talked about no texting, you know, cell phones, and, you know, things that you do in your car that take you away from what's in front of you. So I would think that that would be a piece of any type of presentation, not after the fact, but before the fact, to say, you know, what the public safety say about drivers looking over not just once, but 20 times if they're driving down a heavily traveled road? And so your response is that you have not done?
Specifically talked to them, but I'm cognizant as a planner for 25 years, the spacing and the design and the layout are consistent with other projects. This is meant to be viewed both as a pedestrian walking up and down the sidewalk and as a motorist. And hopefully, to engage the motorist, pull over, get out of their car, and walk in and engage. The Parks Department has a community walk scheduled for mid-part of June. They anticipate between 1,000 and 1,500 participants, and we're hoping that the route and the planning would encourage...
Okay, so you haven't answered my question in whether you've been a planner for 25 years or not. You've not answered that question. And in my third question, you said to take it down at the end of the month?
That's correct.
What do you mean? 30 days until April, June 30th?
That's correct. Approximately four weeks after they've been installed.
Okay, so by July 1st?
Whatever that Saturday, 4th, they're scheduled to be installed on June 4th, so four weeks after that, I believe, is early July.
So for four weeks. And my third question is who at the Jewish school to contact? And who spoke back and said that they were willing to have their children's pictures displayed up?
I spoke with Rabbi Eli Mayerfeldt from Yeshiva Beth Yehuda and Sidney Katz from Akiva Hebrew Day School. I spoke with them both personally this morning, and they both contacted me by phone and said that they were, they specifically mentioned to the council that they want to be partners. They think this is a good idea and they would like to participate. They already have taken photos of their children on a previous project, and all that would need to be done is to get the parents' permission. Then the photos could be digitally submitted to the producer of these posters. And they were just two of many that we could incorporate into this project. And again, this was in response to some of the legitimate concerns about being inclusive with the entire community. Now, we are only talking about 20 to 30 photos, and we want to have a broad spectrum of children faces of Southfield. So that's, there may be others that will participate, but they were the first two to contact.
I spoke with Southfield Christian as well today, and I'm waiting another email from their art teachers, the principal from the elementary school. I haven't written down his name. He's going to be talking to those art teachers and get back to me later this week. Invite him to come and speak to their staff next week, and I told him I'd like to speak to them soon.
Well, I'm glad to see that it's been scaled down, because that was one of my concerns. But I had a concern about this looking away and, you know, there has to be some safety, something in there about how long before that makes for a hazard situation, especially considering the number of people during the summer that are walking back and forth in that area. And they'll be walking even more now because they're going to watch and look at these pictures. Interesting, nice pictures.
And in your packet, there's just a sample of six to 10 other student photos. And again, it's just, it's just a broad spectrum of the children that we're featuring.
Mr. Lance?
Uh-huh, I'm ready. Thank you.
Ms. Banks?
This is brought up by Ms. Cassie this afternoon. It is from Don. It says, "After reviewing," and yes, that we read this into the minutes, please. "After reviewing the agenda package this weekend, I noticed that the face-to-face art project was back on the agenda for discussion. This item was voted down by council at our last meeting. I would like to go on record as adamantly opposing this project. I also find it a sense of, that this item is being brought back to council after it was voted down. If it wasn't for my recent surgery, I would be in attendance at this meeting this evening." Councilman Donald Cassie.
Mr. Lance?
Yeah? If you went to Akiva and Beth Yehuda, why aren't they here tonight to tell us that they're on the table, not the planning department?
Well, Mr. Lance, through the chair, all I can say is I contacted them personally this morning, and they both responded to me this afternoon.
Did you invite them down here tonight?
I did not.
For this presentation?
I sent them the packet that was handed out to you, and they were aware of the stuff...
Did you invite them personally to come here?
I did not. On short notice, I did not. I spoke with them personally on the phone.
Well, they should hear, be here in front of the council and listen to what we have to say, yes or no. But they should be here if they're part of the project.
I made them aware that was on the council tonight for further consideration.
Okay. Do you realize the ramifications of this project on the front lawn or along Evergreen or wherever else you're going to put them? Well, are you going to post guards in this area to prevent vandalism or the CD to be put on there, the mustaches and the beards and whatnot? Are they going to be guarded? Is it going to be security?
Well, those are things we'll have to investigate.
Why are you coming to us? I'm sure you investigated everything.
Mr. Lance, at last, a last council meeting's discussion, I didn't feel you had the full scope of the project. This project is scheduled to go forth on June 4th. I respectfully request to come back in front of council so that you would have a full picture of the project as we move forward. Now, I am trying to understand the process. We have the flower sale out here this weekend. We have the 102nd Colored Infantry Display. We have several other displays and projects that are coming forth over the next few weeks on the lawn, and I'm trying to understand what the process is. I felt that the best way is to meet with you directly, to have an open dialogue and discussion on this project. And if the council decides that this is not the right time, then we move on. I think this is a great project. It's one of those heartbeat D M moments where we could take advantage and get some good publicity for the city. And that's why there's a sense of passion and urgency to come to the council, to partner with the school district and other community schools to take advantage of this exciting project. If we don't decide that it's in the best interest of the city at this time, or maybe we want to investigate it further for some future time, so be it, we'll move on. But I thought that this was important enough to have open dialogue and discussion for your consideration. I did hear a lot of concerns last week. There was no formal vote. And that, therefore, I requested respectfully to bring it back for further consideration.
When we have a lic license come before us, we contact the police. The police have to do a background check, and the police have to give us permission, in effect, to approve the license. You say that after we approve it, you go get vetted by the police department. I think it's the opposite way. The police should know about this, and we've told about this, and even be here tonight to make a decision, too. So I'm not going to vote for it. This belongs in the school. Put it in the schoolyard, put it in the school, put it in the teacher's bedroom. The question I asked last week, would you put it in your house? Oh, no. Okay. I too am astounded that you brought it back today. You don't stop. You're just going ahead. There were votes, there was a consensus. You heard it last week. We didn't take an actual power, but hope you saw it. You recognize who wanted it and who didn't. And you're coming back today, you put it, you asked the president to put it on the council, and he's a gentleman, he put it on the agenda. I think it doesn't belong to the citywide, not a project for the citywide yet, not this type. Because the danger is real today in today's economy and all that's going outside. Put it in the school, inside. Or put it in the parking lot of your school. There, you'll have plenty of cars passing by, and people will see it, but it'll be safe.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. I think from the first presentation, this one is better, and you did address some of the concerns that we had. You did put a beginning and an ending, which we did request, and you did scale it down. I appreciate all of those things. And I think for the short period of time that we wanted to do something like that, just to see how it's going to work out, I wouldn't be, I would not be opposed to that. I do understand the safety issue that was brought up by Councilwoman Garrison. I, I mean, I don't know without having that study how that would be impacted in this particular case. But you did what most of our concerns were from the other night. I think it's good. It's something we have to reach out and try to do, is to be a part of the whole project we're coming in on the ground level, to be a part of the whole project with the community. We have businesses that have also, that will be participating, if I'm understanding you correctly, in the schools, and now the Christian, Southall Christian and Beth Yehuda. So we'll have several schools, so this will be in different clusters throughout the city, which will give us that walkability that we were trying to do, so you can move throughout the city. And I think that's pretty good. I mean, we have to introduce the art in small pieces instead of a time frame. It's not the entire summer. It's just for a short period of time, and we're going to see how it works out if this body decides to go that way. My only other question is, do you have any idea of the cost that might be involved?
Well, the City Center Advisory Board has pledged $5,000 towards the...
Well, you realize that's tax money. You know that, don't you?
It's special assessment district dollars that they voluntarily support.
I don't believe they should use tax money in a project like this.
Through the chair. So the actual cost of the production of the posters is approximately $20. The school district is seeking supplies of material, the brushes and the paste to put the wallpaper up. The City Center District has pledged $5,000 if the project is constructed in this city district to support the additional cost of the marine-grade plywood and the posts and the bullets. As far as the city of Southfield, there is some nominal time that is required by the Parks and Recreation and the Highway to assist in the installation of the framing. But the volunteers would be coming in on Saturday, 4th, to actually put the posters up on the boards. So as far as any monetary costs, there is no monetary cost for the city, but there is some minimal labor costs to assist with making sure that it's properly installed.
Okay, so there's no monetary cost?
Other than the hours, that's some support from the Parks Department. The monetary cost is being funded either through this project grant or outside sources, including the City Center Advisory Board.
Because then you said the artist was contributing?
Well, he's contributing the cost of the production of the posters.
Oh, the posts.
Yes. And the photographic technique and so forth. And he's sharing a part of that, the website as well. So he received approximately $100,000, and he is sharing portions of that with many other communities. My understanding is throughout the country. We were lucky enough to be one of the ones in the world. One of these ladies here wrote the grant and received to be part of this project. That just puts a face and a big name behind our project. Whether, you know, whether he supported it or not, this, at least, he's a well-known artist with worldwide exposure. And we think that that positive press can be brought here to the city of Southfield once we start promoting this and word starts getting out about this unique project. Just think about the Plymouth Ice Festival. Think about the art fair in Ann Arbor. Think about the art project in Grand Rapids. And I firmly believe that this could be the genesis of something that large for the city of Southfield in the future. Maybe not in year one, but I think this is so unique that it's going to just create a positive buzz for our city. And how can you not look at those young children and see our future? And it's a unique take. It's a different form of art, but it's a unique take. And I think if it's done right, and there's some synergy with this, this could be just a fantastic project for our city. And I think this gentleman here mentioned about people coming to our community for the first time, or businesses who failed to venture out, coming out during lunchtime and spending their dollars at our gas station and at our, you know, restaurants and encouraging their families to come back on the weekends. Think about the 2,500 people that come to the library every day and 300,000 people that pass through the pavilion on a yearly basis to get them to capture and take a second look at Southfield instead of just driving here, getting in their car, and then driving home. I think this project has that potential. And that's why I'm passionate about it, and that's why I'm supporting on behalf of the city center that the city seriously considers partnering on this project.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Yehuda?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chen. I hardly know where to start. First of all, I'm going to share with the council some comments that I had from the public, some members of the public since the first COW meeting. And one of them that I thought really was more likely to be the reaction of people is that this looks like a memorial. Somebody driving down Evergreen is going to see pictures and say, there's no dialogue, there's no explanation. The first thought was, are these the children that were killed this year? That actually has been said to me. And I thought, you know, that could very well, that could very well be what people assume. I mean, you can do all kinds of tests what you want, but some people are going to think that. I agree that it's going to be a serious traffic hazard. People are going to get out of their cars and park on Evergreen since they can't park there. They're not going to stop, park their cars, and walk down if they're driving through. It is going to be a distraction. One of the other things that was said to me by members of the community is that they've, we have tried through the village and through all, you know, people always say, well, the schools and the city are the same, the government, because they get this one tax bill. And there have been people, especially during the village, that were working in the outskirts of the town, trying to express to the community that the school government and the city government are separate. And this comment was made to me, this is going to make it look like that there's a real partnership or relationship beyond what is, beyond a friendly relationship, but that the schools and the city really are one, and that the schools are going to talk through their village. And they thought that this was just making a mockery of the whole thing. This is not my view. This is what I'm sharing with you. It does set a precedent for the civic green. And Cherry, although you say we have many displays here, the Flower Day is not a display. We have events here. We have daily events. We've had a couple of art shows we've had. We've had the Calvians Festival. We've had the Jazz Fest. These are event, community events, which a lot of people come here because we have this large space. But we don't, and have never, that I can recall, had any kind of just a regular display such as this, that is nothing except, you know, just there for a display beyond, well, we haven't. I mean, they've been events, and they've been either one day or a couple days. I don't feel that this is very inclusive because you mentioned the Orthodox community has been invited, but we have Calvians, we have Armenians, we have Koreans, we have Asian people that have services here, that have churches here, that have community centers here. And what about the members of the Muslim community who send their children to school and newborns? I mean, we're not, it is not being inclusive. It's really not representative of all the people, and I think it has to be representative of people that are in part of the business community here.
Can I ask another?
No, let me finish. You can answer this later. I think it's, the buzz that you think it's going to create could very well be a negative one. I, for the life of me, and I've been trying to see how this would, this isn't going to rival the Plymouth Art Show, the Plymouth Ice Show. It's not going to rival those things. I mean, there's just no way. I, you can call it art, but just taking a picture, selling it, and putting a lot of pictures on the plate doesn't qualify as art by any professional standard. It's a photographic display, nothing wrong with that, but it is a photographic display. And to say that it doesn't encourage art displays, I disagree with that. But I'm more concerned about the fact that it's, that it's a traffic hazard. We've had, we've never used the civic green without having unanimous council. We've been very, very careful about how we use the civic green and if we're going to set up this, you know, this play. There's so many implications of what you say about all these things that haven't been considered and haven't been brought to us, that you're sure you can solve all these problems. considered and haven't been brought to us that you're sure you can solve those problems. I think it's, I think it's not going to get the buzz that you think. I totally disagree with that. I don't feel that I can support this because, for several reasons. I think it is a traffic hazard. It doesn't include everybody. I just don't feel it's appropriate and I'm not supporting it.
Ms. Lance?
Yeah, I'm interested to the donation from the City Center Committee. I think it's a legal question. Is they, they get that money from the millage from us, don't they?
No, it's a special assessment based on square footage.
I mean, a special assessment, yes. And that's taxpayers' money.
It's actually the, but it's the business owners themselves who pay that millage, I'm sorry, who pay that special assessment. So it's, it's there and all the businesses based on the square foot of the structures that they own pay.
It's still public money.
Well, no, it goes, it belongs to that entity by statute.
I know that, I know that. But can they spend it any way they want?
Well, there is a statutory formula in terms of what could be done, but I assume this would fall into some kind of public relation.
Special program, just like they supporting the walk, the community walk at the Parks Department.
Sure, they have, they have pretty broad discretion on something that would enhance the district.
Yeah, it has to be spent within the district boundaries.
Well, why aren't they down here? They're donating the money to see what they're donating.
They've already seen this presentation. They've already seen this presentation.
Let them come down and see the council and then the presentation also.
Ms. Seaborn?
Yeah, I just want to say that I, I'm, I think this should be on the school property. If the City Center Board wants to do it over there in their area, I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with it being on the front lawn of in front of civic, in front of this facility. And I think, I just think they're appropriate by the schools. I have no problem with it being set up so that people can walk by and see it. But what's wrong with having, what's wrong with having a city side people want it, let them have it over there? I just don't feel it's appropriate. It's just a precedent here for something that we've never done before. And we're very careful about that. And I don't want to set a precedent that everybody starts coming in with these different ideas. But I think I've said all my objections. I just, I think it's not inclusive enough and I don't want them to be against a civic center.
Ms. Garrison?
Well, you know, I think that the city of Southfield and the schools in there, that we should work more collaboratively together. I always believed that, though we are two distinct entities. What impacts one impacts the other and how we support each other. We're even scheduled to meet with the school district in June to talk about how we can work together more collaboratively. So I, I think that the city taking an interest or supporting a project of our public school system that also extends itself to the private schools in the city, I think that's, that's good. I think that is a sense of community. I think it's a sense of community. I don't know that I like the idea of, and I think that this is art. And so I don't have any issue with that. Art is in the eyes of the beholder. And so that's what, for me with that. I'm a little concerned, however, that the way we're trying to get the attention is from people driving, not just of Evergreen, but in other businesses. I would not want this on telegraph where businesses on telegraph have this type of art displayed where motorists are looking up at art. I just think it's, it's, um, we're just asking for progress here. And I can't believe that you come here without something to support. That issue that allowing businesses across the city to look up, or even on Southfield Road, you know, I can't imagine coming up Southfield Road right there, 11 Mile, and if there is another thing out there to distract a motorist versus the five lanes that people are already crossing over to turn left, which is already accidents waiting to happen and accidents that happen all the time, I can't imagine having pictures of our youth.
Ms. Garrison, can I, can I just correct?
Yes.
One thing. It is proposed to go throughout the city on school property, but to only be located within the City Center District as far as businesses are concerned. And we wanted to partner-
And so the center, city district would be what boundary?
It's roughly Evergreen Road, Northwestern Highway between 10 and 11 Mile. There's a triangle that's about a half a mile square.
Right, okay. Well, I, I think it's inappropriate with the speed going down that Northwestern Highway. I, I think this is just, that that's not the place where you want drivers looking up trying to see pictures.
And again, I don't, there's nothing specifically proposed for that. That's the boundaries of the district.
Well, that's, I don't think that's appropriate. I think that it is appropriate to have the children's pictures displayed somewhere on city property, but I don't know that the place for it is on the side of our street. And I always thought, what about across the street right there and have that lot, you know, put up something and let people park while, you know, while they're eating at the restaurant and walk over and walk around and see something going on. I think it's exciting, you know, I was the, when I was growing up, I'm from Belleville. When I was in elementary school, I was the only black girl in the school. Yet my pictures showed up whenever it was convenient to show racial diversity. And it was wrong because it took me out there and tried to portray me as something that wasn't accurate. So I hope that we are not looking here to find the only, our school district is 98% or help me with this, African American or 95% or something. I hope we are not finding the only Asian child or the only white child in the class and putting it up trying to say, oh, yes, this is how diverse we are because we're not diverse like that. But if we're saying that our city is diverse, which is where the city comes in, it is diverse. We do have diversity in the city. So if it shows our youth, so that piece of it-
Well, on city property, we would use the latest census to give a broad perspective proportionally what was fair and reasonable about our ethnic diversity in the community.
Within the community.
Which is 75% African American and I could break it all the way down to slivers of people, but we don't plan to do that. And the Shiva Bet Yehuda, the Kiva Hebrew Desol, and the Christian is just a sampling of us outreach. We're not going to exclude anybody. And if we can find more partners between now and June 4th, we certainly will embrace and encourage them to participate.
Okay, and I, and I find it very hard to believe that without a presentation or without a school at a Kiva or whatever other school, without this coming to their board, that there is any one person who has the authority to say, yes, we'll be a part of this, without going to their board or whomever the decision-making body. I find that hard to believe, that anybody would say, yes, go ahead and we can count on that. Because we wouldn't do it here. There's nobody here, a city elected official that could say, yes, we'll be a part of it. It takes the board to approve it. So, bottom line, well, unless I hear something else that persuades me differently. I'd like to see it somewhere, but I don't think it belongs on Evergreen. This is a smaller track, but I think it belongs someplace where, and we PR it, you know, and make it a part of this strip. I think it really belongs across the street. And I think it will have the excitement, but you have to park to get out to see it.
And that's one of the concepts, one of the concepts.
But I think it's the right message to our community that we embrace our children. And we, and beyond that, we embrace our teachers and our educators. And that we should be working together, not working separately or how that, heck, there's no reason to have a meeting at June 8th with the school district. June 6th, then there's no reason to have that meeting if we're not talking about how we can help each other. So I won't support it on Evergreen because you haven't given me any information about hazards, so I will not support that. But I would support it somewhere right up in this area. I think it would boost the area. I don't, I'm not looking for international attention. I think some, right here in Michigan, sometimes we need to stay a little under the radar. You know, we're a business community and we do things for business and, but I'm not looking to get international attention or even national attention. I don't think it's in our best, it's best for the city at this time with the politics that are going on, but I would support it across the street in that area.
We have a Plan B to go across the street if the council so desires.
I would support that because I think that would be wonderful.
There's sidewalks, people can park, we can locate, we can, we can install 20 to 30 of them along the sidewalk, kind of in-house shape.
I would run a public sidewalk.
Mr. Lance, yes, Blor.
I would support it. And I would encourage other people in our city, I think we should have some events. And I think Evergreen is where the city has talked about developing. I would support that. But inside of Evergreen or the Central Park Boulevard, I'm sorry. That's where the building used to be, that's a-
The Pomeroy site.
Right, I would support something over there.
Parks Department does have an agreement for special events on that property.
Because I think it enhances the walkability of this area and the whole culture, or someplace to go in Southfield too. But I would not support it on Evergreen because we haven't that, because that brought more than anything it talks about destruction and nobody hit going across the street. And I've been, I've been at the corner, on a bike, at the corner of Evergreen 696. I was on a bike and another kid was on a bike and crossed the street and got hit, just like that, right in front of me. Police were there two minutes. So they got hit just like that. And I saw that young man on the ground. So I would not support it. It's just too heavily traveled, too heavily traveled.
Is that it?
Oh, yes, that's it.
Anyone else? Ms. Lance, did you have something to add today? Have you considered an alternative location on City Jones?
Ms. Garrison alluded to, our Plan B would be to go across the street.
No, it's city property.
Not, not within the City Center District. I think that we focused on Evergreen because it would be the greatest visibility and we have the greatest amount of traffic. Across the street would be a secondary choice, but I still think it would meet the purposes and intent of the art project and it would satisfy the businesses who want to create some excitement and buzz for this area. So we could certainly look at, look at the site across the street, incorporate Central Park Boulevard, which the City Center supports through landscaping and irrigation and banners and concerts as an alternative location. I think it would, it would still work and it might be a good first step. And we'll see how it goes. And next year we could, you know, if it's successful, we can consider other, other options. But I certainly think it's worth, worth pursuing and I think that, that site would also do well.
The reason I brought that up is there seems to be a concern around the table of distractions along the Evergreen Road. And yet, we know that there are quite a number, 2,500 people or so that go to the library every day. And the main entrance to the library is the north driveway. Could that, on either side of that drive, could that be an alternate to Evergreen? But it wouldn't have the thousands of, you know, 5,000 cars going up and down Evergreen, but it wouldn't have those folks that quote unquote live in Southfield or at least attend, go to the Southfield Library, see the young people outside of it as well. Because if they put it on school property, unless they put it along the travel portions, you know, behind the sidewalks of school properties, it's going to be those folks that either bring their kids to school or drop their kids off. So it'll be sort of a captive audience in that situation. So for, out of the chute, maybe we don't try to get a home run, but we can, because you're a baseball coach, we don't-
I'll take a double any day.
Yeah, right, especially if there's somebody on third.
Right.
Maybe if we find that there's a liking to it, especially if the City Center is going to allow it along City Center Boulevard.
Central Park.
Or Central Park Boulevard. You know, that's a-
I think both suggestions are feasible. I think both suggestions are feasible.
Ms. Lance?
You mentioned Civic Center Drive, Central Drive, that's a public roadway. You're going to have the same problem there if they come out of the office building and speed up on Central Drive there.
Central Park Boulevard. Again, it would, based on getting support from the police department, traffic engineering and so forth.
We've got to go to them first.
That's correct, that's correct. Again, this, this is an educational, get some feedback here. Time is running short, however, I still think it's, you know, worth consideration. And as Mr. Fraser indicated, the school district would benefit with their parents and their children, but the visibility for the city would be limited. By having it in a public space and partnering, we get more positive exposure that way. And that's why we're bringing it forward for your consideration. I certainly know that the school district will go forward with, with their project and have success. And again, my, my, my City Center Advisory Board was very excited about partnering and wanted to participate.
You start.
Again, coming to the Beth Yehuda or Kiva or some of the other, they should be down here just like the others are. And their boards would give permission, not the individual or director there. I don't buy that.
Well, Mr. Lance, just in short, in the short time from making the initial contact on Friday to today, I was very happy that I got a positive response. And obviously, they would have to have their boards support this to go forward officially, but since, since we only have two and a half weeks, at least there was some positive feedback that, yes, they would support this with their boards and commissions and we need to have sign off from the parents, but the photos have been taken, they were used at another display and they're readily available to participate in this project. And there are other schools that will be contacted over the next couple of days and we hope to have a favorable response as well.
As soon as everybody gets through talking. You done? Okay, Ms. Seaborn?
I, I know that Central Park Boulevard is heavily traveled because of the people that work in the town center. I think putting it across the street in that vacant spot isn't a bad idea. I don't want to see it right up by the wall where people that drive by have to look over because you, but you're going to look over, you can't help it. I don't, I don't want to encourage that. But if they want to display it in there and those people are, you know, that whole median area, which is appropriate if they want to do that, I don't, I don't think that's such a problematic in terms of diversity. I would still like to have the Department of Labor input on that. I don't, my main concern, I mean, I am concerned by heading along Beattyville Road, there's no question about that. But right up on, you know, where I said what I wanted to say about the civic center of the green. But, right up on, you know, where I said what I wanted to say about the civic, the civic center of Evergreen, um. I think they, I think they could also have a, on the city's center porch, um, on their property, on the side of, on their. But, again, it's very busy road when you're trying to go, leaving the office and you're going towards the freeway. There's, there's city traffic. I've done an estimate there because somebody made a, a frame against the lights going to work and I was in the right way.
Ms. Garrison, if Mr. Fraser alluded to, a Plan B, short of putting it on Evergreen, was to work with the interior of the property. There is an existing interior sidewalk system and that we, you would place them along the interior. This would provide access and parking on the site and wouldn't, wouldn't be as much of a distraction for motorists. So, people could actually come in, park and get out of their car and walk.
So, it wouldn't be right there as you.
This is, this is one location.
That would be, that would be.
And, and then, um, a possible second location could be.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it right.
But, the dates were all of different options that we investigated.
Right. But, I'm just saying for traffic safety, I wouldn't put it right at the intersection where I put it somewhere.
Good. Good, Ms. Garrison?
Uh, I was just wondering, have we thought about any of our parks, you know, Inglewood is Milwaukee Park and it's huge. Um, it has, uh, a lot of people who go there all the time. I was just wondering, have we thought about, you know, PR-ing it that this is supporting our youth and our schools and city youth? And as we, if we do some other places, also an opportunity at some of our parks, um, to put up, I don't know, five, six, seven, eight pictures, um, because it, we have another problem going to the.
We haven't secured additional funding for, for Arizona by the city center at this time. And given the time constraints, concerned about spreading. We're, we're taking about twenty-five percent of all the photos and, and the school district would be putting up the remainders.
Just a thought.
Yep. But, we wanted to have it in our center of it all, our center of our center of it all.
Is that it? Is that it?
Oh, yes, that's it.
Ms. Banks?
Here's the chair. Has, um, HGVU, Ellison and Miss Golden contacted us? No.
And I'd be happy to get any other contact information.
That is another, the road to the town center. Can you bring the, um, the F C up please?
Sure.
I'm just curious, is there a reason why when we talk about Central Park Boulevard, you've got this beautiful boulevard all the way here? You know, at least start it there, let's see what it's gonna look like and maybe it will eventually expand. I mean, you're talking about a little area here where no one's gonna see it. You've got all this green grass, beautiful tulips, flowers, flags. I don't understand.
Here, we don't have sidewalks and, and we were, we're looking at, um, um, putting it in the median here. And again, it just depends on, uh, you know, the logistics of how much we can, we can install. But, these are all different areas that we did look at and we wanted. But, I, I hear you. And again, this is something, if, if it goes well this year, as we have a whole year to plan in the future, we could take advantage of, of expanding the project.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Phil?
Yes. I was wondering, what businesses, what names of businesses have already agreed?
Well, um, the town center wanted to participate, um, San Juat's property wanted to participate, I believe, and Mr. Peterson's, um, property, Five Thousand Tower was interested. Uh, Mr. Atkins' property wanted to participate. Those are four that come to mind.
Okay. I was just thinking in location where, I think that the area across the street is a good idea because we did want to start small and that would give people the ability to walk and see and it would be away from traffic. I travel every day down Central Parkway and putting things in the median, I don't know if that would really work or not. I, I, I really don't.
It's just a, a alternative.
Right. But, that cor, that corner line, that would be.
I think that's probably the best location for it.
For, you know, to start with.
Short of, out of.
Yeah. That, that's because that was one of the things that.
Again, I'd be just happy to have a starting point.
Right, right.
And it's not me personally, but on behalf of the city and on behalf of the city center.
Right. No, and I'm not saying to you personally, and that's why I was asking for the business because even though it's there on that corner, the other businesses are around there. So, you could still have it in more than one location and still make it walk. That's all I was.
Yeah, just, uh, to follow up to Ms. Taylor's family about the other businesses. All the businesses that he named, that part of the city center and side street board, they're all members of that group.
Okay.
Anyone else? Let me, uh, see if I can wrap this up, uh, make some comments. One of the things that, uh, we all know, we, because we've been, uh, exposed to this over a period of, uh, time since our new governor's been elected, is that he feels very strongly about organizations cooperating with each other, uh, local governments cooperating with each other. And he's even, part of his program is to fund those organizations, those governments that show that they're willing to partner with other governments. The school district is another government, even though when the taxpayers write a, a check to pay the taxes that they paid to the city of Southfield, we happen to only be the collector of the funds and we divide them up. But, this is a project that, uh, would show that we can cooperate with another entity, which is the schools. The other thing is, uh, with the, uh, thrust of the Michigan Municipal League, uh, they've done an awful lot of study about how to keep young people from moving away from communities to how to get people to come back home after they have left the community. And that is to give them something that they can identify with. Um, around the table, I've heard we've never done this before and that's true. We never have done it before, but does that mean that we can't do it now? Uh, there's a lot of things we've never done before. At one time, we never had fireworks. And, but then we did have fireworks and we found out that it worked. And now, we don't have fireworks because we can't afford to have fireworks at this time. But, I'm looking forward to the day when we can have fireworks again. So, the fact that we haven't done this before ought not to be, as far as I'm concerned, an impediment of going ahead and doing this, uh, this project if we can do it safely and with good. Uh, we do talk about the Southfield standard. And I'm presuming that the committee that's working together will come up with a program that will adhere to what we consider a high standard for displays. Will that open the door for anybody else that wants to come in and, and say, okay, you put your, your photos up there, now I get to put mine up there? Well, we'll deal with those as they come along. And maybe we will and maybe we won't. And maybe this will be the beginning of an art type display that's similar to how Grand Rapids has evolved, that, uh, started small and now it's, it's an attraction that people plan their vacations around. It's, uh, probably not quite as large as the Holland Tulip Festival, but, uh, the Holland Tulip Festival's been going on for almost a hundred years. So, I guess what I'm suggesting is that we're going to go around the table and we're gonna do a consensus, which is sort of a vote, to find out if, if we can do it in a safe manner. And, uh, and apparently, along Evergreen Road is not, you know, if you're going along Evergreen Road, I think you probably already know what the outcome's gonna be.
As I said, just to shorten of the discussion, I, I think, uh, we can make it work across the street.
Okay. So, uh, and as far as, as I'm concerned, the decision that we're making here is, do we want to participate in this project? But, actually, our control really is, do we want it on the front lawn? What happens across the street, I don't think that we have an awful lot of say in it, but our ordinances allow quite a bit of say in it.
Can I clarify one thing?
Yes.
If you go to the lot that we have the easement, unless, that is, that is an easement that's granted to the city.
Okay, okay.
So, you do have to.
Okay, on that one piece. But, the rest, the rest of it, uh, would be controlled by the city center board and our ordinances. We wouldn't allow them to do something that would violate our ordinances.
That's correct.
So, I guess the consensus is, uh, along Evergreen Road, which is off the table. Okay. And the rest of it is the lot that we have easement to across the street. And then, the rest of it is up to the schools, to the city center board.
That's correct.
Okay?
Thank you very much for your time.
So, with, what, uh, we haven't.
I know.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
So, I'm just kinda trying to crystallize what we're going to, we're gonna do a consensus on. That is the lot across the corner. That's really the sum and substance. So, do we want to participate in it? And if we participate in it, it will be on the lot across the corner. The rest of it is up to the schools and the city center.
And the individual business.
Yes.
For their property, right?
For their property.
Right.
Ms. Garrison?
I have a question with that, um, as far as our ordinances. Because I don't think also, for example, in front of Southfield Lakerup, I don't think the, the pictures should be displayed right along Twelve Mile.
We don't have anything to say about Southfield.
Well, I don't know that we don't have anything to say.
Because that's a different city.
No, Southfield?
Southfield Lakerup, there's a different city.
Okay, well, forget that one, let's take another school.
Okay.
How about Southfield High? Where we've had, um, you know, we've had deaths, you know, deaths of a child, you know, crossing the street there. I think we do have something to say if the school or the business decides to put, uh, this artwork up where it is impacting the traffic. I think we do have something to say. I think our ordinance is that we have an obligation to keep our city safe from things that could happen. So, I'm not sure what you're saying, that I agree with that. Unless there's no ordinance that talks about, um, uh, distractions along the roadways or something about safety, because we don't need, we don't need, we don't need not, not one person injured because of this. We do not need that.
I don't think I ever even suggested that we could.
No.
Sacrifice even one person.
You never suggested it.
And I said, our, our ordinances ought to control how the signs are put up along the roadways. That's what they're there for.
Through the chair?
Yes.
And it's not a sign, but we have, we have clear vision views, we have safety things that can't be obstructed and they have to be followed.
The police, the, the ordinances, the committee should make that decision. If, if we're sitting here projecting what's gonna happen if we do this or do that, it's mere projection. If you study it and say, if we do this, what's likely to happen at the committee level? I'm gonna be happy with it. Everybody else around the table can, can put their consensus in however they feel comfortable with that. Uh, Mayor?
I just would like to, to firmly offer here, um, any plan that you have for it to be signed off by the city and being meeting our safety code. And if that happens, would this council be in agreement of their being placed? So, if, if the safety issue, instead of a hundred feet apart, it has to be two hundred feet apart, would this body be affected? Because I think it is a, and I'll just say this, that we want safety. Uh, if we do embrace this, which I think we should, that it is a sign of fire police, which we've heard, so that it does comply with that.
You're talking about Evergreen?
You know, I'm not talking about any road, wherever it's, wherever it's.
Okay. Ms. Seymour?
Yeah, um, I think, I think the idea of, of what Ms. Garrison brought up is, is important. And what I would say is, while it's not technically a sign because there's no printed material on there, in effect, it has the, I think the sign ordinance in terms of placement of these signs, I mean, the, the sign ordinance considers traffic safety and visibility and, and how high or low you can have a sign. So, I think the, the, the sign, um, department or the person that's in charge of that ought to have input with the police department because you could be having visibility issues. And I do think that's a consideration. And lots of road is a very busy street, very, very busy, a lot of traffic. So, if, if a sign couldn't go there of that size and shape, then the picture shouldn't go there because it would have the same effect of being a hazard. And that, I would like to add that to the, to the safety issue because that's what they do. And that's one of their. You know, it's more than just, uh, is it aesthetically or in the signs? It has a lot to do with safety because I think that has to take, you know, you can't put signs up with them. There's only, you know, is the intersection. I do, I think that has to be part of the, the consideration, major part of it.
As I said, the issue should be whether the sign would embrace this within the guidelines for the police saying it's safe there and it's placed so that it will not be a deterrent. We do political things, we do advertisements for the flower show or everything else and we expect people to read them. Um, I mean, we do put advertisement and words around, there's no reading of these, no word on these pictures. So, we must adhere to safety. And so, we follow that guideline. It should be something we should be able to do wherever we place.
Have to go with time, time.
Ms. Garrison?
Um, you know, I don't support what the mayor has suggested because what that does is open it right back up to. I don't support, support that. I think that.
You don't support what?
What she suggested, that wherever it is determined that it is not a, a safety hazard by the police, that there's the, um, artwork can go, I, I don't support that. I, I support more of what we just talked about. Let's try right here across the street, let's try that this year. Is today, is, what's the day today, May?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. We're talking in two weeks, um, this is going to go up. And I, I support it across the street, I don't support, uh, what the mayor has suggested.
To be clear, when I said you brought up the school issue, that you didn't support it being on school property.
By the street.
The schools have the right to put this exhibit on their property. However, you said there's still a concern about safety. And so, that when the schools put it on their property and it's on a main street, then it should adhere to make sure, even though they have the right to put on their property, that is adhering to a safety guideline that the police say. So, I wasn't in disagreement with you. But, we cannot tell the schools, you cannot put this exhibit on your property. We cannot do that.
We didn't say that. We said that wherever it is, it has to be.
But, you, you don't agree.
I don't agree with you because that opens it up not just to the schools, that opens it right back up to Evergreen where we sat here and we talked about, we didn't think that was the place. I said, if it goes to the, um, schools, I didn't say, but using what you just said, that if it goes to the schools, yes, it is their property, but the, we have a controlling piece regarding our ordinances in keeping the, the, the city safe.
Ms. Garrison?
So, that, I don't, but we're not, we're not saying the same thing, I mean.
I think you're both saying the same thing, so.
No.
I'm, as a, as an observer.
Well.
So, let me, let me take my statement then.
Okay.
Just off the case. If those make sense.
All right. So, as I tried to state, that the display will go up once the committee determines that it can be done safely and within, uh, a professional standard or a standard that, that the Southfield wants to maintain. So, pardon me? Well, of course it means our ordinance. Um, and because the police will be involved in it, they will have, say, whoever's on, on a committee, committee has to make, to put the plan together. And that's what's on the table. As far as city concerns, the, the, uh, displays on city property will be limited to the.
Hundred.
Across the street. So, the rest of it has to be controlled by ordinances and common sense.
Right.
Now, we haven't completely tied your hands, we're gonna do a consensus around the table. Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Garrison?
Yes.
Yes. Is it, Mr. Lance?
Yes, what you said, of course, yeah.
Ms. Seymour? Can I say yes?
Again, thank you very much for your time.
And you got to...